Meeting, school committee meeting of October 25th, 2022. If we could all please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So the public can access this meeting by WebEx technology. The Burlington School Committee will hear public comments in person and virtually. Meetings are also broadcast live on Burlington Cable Access TV, BCAT, and video/audio recordings are being made. This meeting hearing of the Burlington School Committee will be held in person at the location provided on this notice. Members of the public are welcome to attend this meeting in person. Please note that while the option for remote attendance and/or participation is being provided as a courtesy to the public, the meeting hearing will not be suspended or terminated if technological problems interrupt the broadcast, virtual broadcasts, unless otherwise required by law. Members of the public with particular interest in any specific item on this agenda should make plans for in-person versus virtual attendance accordingly. The access code for tonight's meeting is 2341-097-8056. The password is Tuesday. If you're participating remotely, please identify yourself by entering your name when you log in. When you speak, please state your name and please turn on your camera. Next I'll do the equity statement. Education equity, educational equity means that every child belongs and receives whatever support he, she, they need to develop his, her, their full academic, emotional, and social potential to learn and thrive every day. This begins with kindness and valuing the humanity of every child individual. Ms. Monaco is unable to attend tonight, so there'll be four of us. And first item up is approval of the warrants. We have two to approve.
I'd like move to approve the first warrant.
Dated 9/12.
Dated 9/12, sure.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I'm all opposed. And I'm in favor, so it's 4-0-0. A motion for the second.
So move for the second warrant from the date of 9/19, is it?
Mm-hmm.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I'm in favor, 4-0-0. Next item is public participation. I will let everyone know that I am going to alternate between virtual and in-person for the participation. And is there anybody in the in-person audience who would like to approach? Oh, for an item not on the agenda. Please state your name.
Judy Crossman.
Nice to meet you.
I am a Burlington resident and educator. I was hired in 2003 to teach at the high school. My children attend the Burlington schools. They're both currently at the high school. And I know the system pretty well. I know its strengths and its needs. I am here tonight to ask you, our district leaders, to work quickly to fill a void in DEI leadership. I was part of the original group of teachers, students, administrators, parents.
Or pull it closer to you.
Sure. Better? Good? I was part of the original group of teachers, students, administrators, parents, and town meeting members who advocated for the creation of the DEI position, director of DEI position. In my 20 years as a Burlington educator, I've never seen a position in job description that was so deeply discussed and scrutinized. After a very lengthy process, a community of diverse stakeholders ultimately agreed to create this position. So first, I'm here to ask you to repost the position promptly. We need someone with DEI experience and expertise who can lead the work to examine district policies and curricula, to determine best practices, to support the leaders and educators who do the work. Dr. Conti has repeatedly said, excuse me, that equity work cannot rest on the shoulders of one individual. Must be taken up by all educators, must live in all areas of education. I agree wholeheartedly. That's why we need to support the next director of DEI more thoughtfully. When we created the new position, I suggested we also create DEI coach positions. That idea did not gain traction. So again, I feel strongly that we need coaches in each building who can work regularly with educators, who have time to review a lesson plan, consider a curricular choice, problem solve a challenging situation. These are the daily interactions that a DEI director working alone just does not have the time to engage in on a regular basis. In short, we need both a director of DEI, who can lead equity work at the systemic level, and coaches who can support the work and daily interactions with educators. I've had many conversations with students in the last few weeks who were shocked to learn about the loss of our equity leaders. These students have shared feelings of sadness, anger, disappointment, and despair. It's the despair, the feeling of hopelessness, that is just deeply concerning to me. Some students are here tonight, and you'll hear from them shortly. Others have said to me, what's the point? The adults will just say what they think we want to hear, and then nothing changes. So to those students, I say your identity matters, your voice matters. I believe this to be true, and I believe that administrative silence or inaction will further alienate students who feel disillusioned and who frankly, aren't thriving. So to you, our district leaders, I say your decisions right now matter. If you want learning, equity, and thriving to be more than the words on a document, and I believe that you do, please repost the director of DEI position and develop a building-based plan to support our educators and the students they serve. Thank you.
Thank you. And just as a reminder, you were great. Everyone who's participating publicly, you are limited to three minutes, and you stayed right in there, so I forgot to state that. Is there anybody virtually with their hand up? Nope. So the next person who would like to approach in the audience? Tag your it. Because it's later, yeah. Identify yourself, please.
I'm Beza Asaias.
I'm sorry?
Beza Asaias.
Nice to meet you.
My name is Beza Asaias. I'm a representative of the African-American Association Club and DEI. I'm going to speak on the fact that there aren't any culture teachers around to represent our club. First, you should hear where I'm coming from. At the age of five, when I started kindergarten, I was the only black girl in my first class, in my, in my class, then again in first, second, third, and fourth grade. The only one, the only one with black curly hair, the only one with brown skin, the only one with dark brown eyes. My hair was always braided in a protective hairstyle. I could, I could never relate to the girls who had their hair in pigtails or high ponytails. As a young girl who had, as a young girl who had, this affected me throughout my entire elementary school experience. I was 11 when I entered sixth grade. I started seeing others just like me. I would relate to them in ways I never related to others in the past years. Seeing others like, seeing others like me was a huge sense of community to me. When I was a freshman coming into high school and knowing there was a DI club just for us, it made a huge impact on me knowing I had my own people to go to with anything. That gave me a, that gave me a support system I never thought I'd have outside of my family. I was devastated to know that a place I turned to for comfort might not continue. You still may not understand where I'm coming from because hearing and experiencing are two different things, but I truly want to get to the, to get to the bottom of this issue. So me and my fellow peers do not lose something that we love so much because this isn't just a club to us.
Thank you very much for sharing.
Thank you.
Any audience? Nope. Anybody else in the room who'd like to approach? And again, if you guys can move the mic a little closer, because people in the audience virtually are having a trouble hearing. Your name, please?
Nora Crossman. My name is Nora Crossman. I'm a junior at Burlington High School and a member of the DEI Student Leader Committee. And I'm here today to ask that you not only repost the DEI position, but that you create DEI coordinator positions as well in each of the schools. Being a part of the DEI Student Committee meant so much to me, and talking about the changes to our schools that could take place was inspiring. We were given the opportunity to talk to other students and teachers about these changes and why they are important, but that is about as far as we got before we were blindsided by the loss of our leaders. These leaders made myself and other students feel safe and seen and heard. I was hopeful for the future of our district. I was hopeful that we would finally see the change we've been asking for for years. I was hopeful that we would create a system in which every student feels safe to express their true identity. Last spring, we went to the middle school to have restorative justice circles with the students and teachers after several instances of racial slurs being used. It was a much-needed experience for both teachers and students, but it is upsetting to me that we had to wait until an act of racism had already occurred for these discussions to be held. We can't keep going off of damage control. We need to get ahead of this and make changes before anyone else is hurt. We need to hold open discussions about diversity, equity, and inclusion for students. We need training on diversity, equity, and inclusion for faculty. And we need a DEI director to oversee this. We need coordinators in each school to make sure these things actually happen. Thank you.
Thank you. So no one virtual again, so someone in the room, would you like to come up? Come on up? Your name, please?
Hello, my name is Yona Asaias. I'm a junior at Burlington High School who is thinking of joining DEI this year, but was saddened to hear of its slow dismantlement. When I heard of this program, I was excited for our school community to take steps towards realizing the implicit bias and ignorance that exists in our hallways, ranging from the elementary schools all the way up to the high schools. This is caused by many factors, but substantially, a lack of education in our school system surrounding these minority groups of which DEI could have offered. As a black student, I've experienced this ignorance and implicit bias firsthand. In elementary, elementary school, for example, I was one of very few black students in my class, and was, and one of the reoccurring questions I faced as a kid was, can I touch your hair? From both students and staff. I never thought as much, I never thought as much of it as a kid, but I knew if I had ever asked to do the same, I would get scolded for such an odd behavior when I was just mimicking my environment. Why should my, why should my racial and ethnic background change my treatment? Another example is of my sister, who had been assumed to not speak English and had been given an Amharic dictionary solely based on her ethnic and racial background. These may seem like misunderstandings or simple mistakes, but they are kind of dehumanizing and reveal the racial and, the racial stereotypes our school system implicitly holds, because these instances could have easily been avoided. DEI needs to be a part of our school systems, as it will address these issues through education, the whole point of a school system, and hopefully lead to a better and more equal learning environment in Burlington. I believe if DEI and its programs affected schooling prior to me going, these negative experiences I surrounded, I faced surrounding race and ethnicity in our schools could have been avoided.
Thank you very much. Any virtual? Who in the audience would like to come up next?
Good evening. My name is Martha Pauline. I'm a senior at Burlington High. I'm coming here tonight to talk to you guys and ask you to please post the DI position again. We need this. In your mission statement, you say Burlington High School's mission statement is to develop lifelong learners and engage community members who think creatively and critically and who respect human differences in an increasingly diverse society. So I'm asking you to stand by your mission statement. Cut the performative activism, actually do something for us. Make your students of color feel like they're important here. Post the position again. Do right by us. It's one thing to write it and print it on a paper and put in your halls, but actually stand by it. Post the position and get someone qualified to come here and make changes in school. If you want change for us and you want us to feel like we belong here, do right by us. Cut the performative activism, because anybody can perform. I've been seeing performances since ninth grade, and I'm a senior now. I think the school's done enough performing, and it's time to actually stand by your actions, sorry, your words. Because we need this. It doesn't affect you guys sitting up here, but it affects us and students who look like me. Like Beza said, it's one thing to experience something and one thing to see it. You've seen it. You'll never experience it, but you need to do something to change it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone virtual? Is there anyone else who'd like to come up? Just make sure the mic is up close to both of you between you, please.
My name is Kezuka Chago, and I'm a senior at Burlington High.
My name is Ethan Jean Baptiste, and I'm a junior at Burlington High.
I am a black student in this school, and I do not feel safe. DI makes me feel safe, heard, and understood. Having to deal with ignorance and racism in the school is debilitating. So having a safe space like DI has made me feel understood and let out any grievances I had to people I know actually cared about me and my well-being. By taking it away, I no longer have that safe space as a black student and feel as though I do not have any authority figure that I can turn to during stressful times. Witnessing the departure of Porch, Larkin, and Miss Knight has made me sick to my stomach because what is being communicated to me is that the only people who did any type of work when it came to racial discrimination are gone, and has generally made me feel unsafe. The lack of responsibility when it comes to this department proves to me how words such as learning, equity, and thriving are empty words when the only DI disappears after one year. I know this type of work is hard and uncomfortable, but being uncomfortable and having open discussions is what leads to change, so please post the DI position.
I would also like to make one thing clear about DEI. I think, well, I know that it's not the responsibility of black students and black staff to have to spoon-feed people on how to not be racist, and it's not our job to tolerate blatant ignorance and racism. And it is known that DEI should not be run by one person. That's way too much for one person to handle. As I said previously, we should divide it, we should have certain people for certain schools because there's no way for one person to run the whole district. There have also been comments made that certain members are selfish for leaving the school and leaving people from DEI, and that they should do it for the students. But the reality is that it shouldn't be just him doing it for the students, because people that were saying that he has to do it for the students weren't doing anything for black students. They say that this school is supposed to be diverse, and everyone should welcome diversity and equality, but none of that is ever done. Even like our mission statement and what was said in the beginning of the, of this committee meeting, most of that, if not all of that, applies to only the white students in this school. And one thing that is prevalent in this is also that people who tend to speak out, students and staff who tend to speak out against the struggles with, including diversity and struggles with being accepted in this school, are either surrounded by people who act like they care when they're, when you're in front of them, or they are silenced. And it is also not a coincidence that all of the administrative people of color are leaving this district and town because they realize that this is a racist town, and they've kind of came to their common sense. And honestly, like, I don't know, it could be something with the Burlington water, but something's not right with the culture in this town.
Thank you.
Thank you both. Is there anyone else?
Hello, can you hear me? Okay. My name is Shannon Janowitz. I'm an English teacher and the English Department Chair at the high school. I did come here to support the students who had decided to speak today for public participation. And I also viewed it as an opportunity to share a project that was going on at the high school that I wanted to make sure the school committee was aware of, that I feel like directly relates to what they are talking about. So last year, the high school participated in the National We Are America Project, which is, last year was its third year running. It is a program that asks schools to essentially gather students together to talk about what it means to be an American and what it, what that diversity and that richness means to them, as well as how do we all come together and have conversations about the evolving American identity, about the importance of feeling, a sense of belonging, and about this idea of community, working together. So I essentially wanted to share this book. I brought copies for each of you. But I do want to read the dedication that the students wrote, because I do think that it connects to our DEI focus and the need essentially to have conversations and to provide people opportunity with the space and training to have those conversations effectively. So this is their dedication. This book is dedicated to everyone who sometimes feels out of place, who sometimes spins with questions, who sometimes stands with certainty. This book is dedicated to the people who work to make the American promise real. This book is dedicated to anyone who needs it and to everyone who reads it. This book is dedicated to the conversations that we hope to inspire. This book is dedicated to America. So I essentially, again, just want to leave this here for you. I'll put them at the table, and you can take them tonight. But the, the students who shared their experiences in this collection speak to the amazing diversity in Burlington, but they also speak to the need to have more, more effective conversations about how to be a responsible member of a diverse community.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who'd like to approach?
Good evening, Board. My name is Sean Musselman. I'm a teacher, curriculum, science, and social studies for the elementary schools, and also the BEA president.
And I am Sarah Vasaki, fourth grade teacher at Pine Glen, as well as the vice president of the Burlington Educators Association.
We'd like to start by thanking, sincerely thanking, the students, the community, and the educators, both past and present, who have been at the forefront of our district's work to be a more diverse, equitable, and inclusive school system. The BEA recognizes the crossroads that our district finds itself at today and the uncertain times that we live in. But to this end, we are here tonight to amplify our students' voices, supporting a renewed commitment to DEI leadership at the highest levels of our school and administration.
During our October 3rd board meeting, BEA leadership reaffirmed the need for our students and educators, particularly those from historically marginalized communities, to come to school with the understanding that they are valued, they are welcome, they belong, and they are safe. We recognize the critical role the BEA plays in ensuring this is so, while acknowledging the BEA has much room to learn and grow to meet the expectations of our students and community. We are grateful for the voices of the students here this evening and the vision they share, understanding fully that their perspectives and goals must lead in framing this work for us and the district at large.
We are eager to review the equity audit results and to work in coalition with our students and with you to rectify the identified areas of improvement. We recognize that only with short and long-term commitments to DI work and leadership will we deliver on our shared mission to serve all our students and realize the equitable outcomes our community aspires to and deserves. So thank you for listening again to our students, and thank you again to the students in this room and out, community members, and our educators who have shared this evening.
Thank you both. Is there anyone else who would like to approach? Okay. Thank you all. Thank you to the students who all put together some very thoughtful comments that we all need to think about deeply. And at this point, if there's no one else who wants to talk about anything else that's not on the agenda, we're going to go on and move to the next agenda item. I guess we could do that. There's a suggestion that we go ahead, and you want to go ahead and move to the. Yeah, we have another presentation. Let's just stay, keep it in order. Yep. So we're done with the public participation. Let's go ahead and go to information and reports. Dr. Conti.
Excuse me, can I just clarify for the audience what we just decided?
Okay, I'll talk to it. I'll, I'll mention it. We actually have on the agenda the DEI discussion, where we're going to review the actual job description. I could have asked everyone to wait and speak at that point, but I felt you all were ready to talk now and didn't want you'd have to wait if you had somewhere else you had to go, so I wanted to make sure you all had the opportunity to approach us and speak. So right now, like I said, we're going to go ahead and move to the next agenda item, which is again, information and reports. Dr. Conti.
Thank you, Madam Chair. There is no subcommittee reports, but we are joined by our school committee student representative this evening, Matt Shannon. So Matt, this is your first meeting of the year, and so thank you for joining us. And in, on future agendas, there'll be a student report that is identified specifically. So with that, I'll turn it over to you.
Hi, for those who don't know me, I'm Matt Shannon. I'm a junior at Burlington High School, and I'm the student representative for the school committee on behalf of Burlington High School students. As we have heard today, we have had a lot of students speak on behalf of the DI, DEI position and what it means to them, and I really just want to amplify those voices. Like what Beza and Marta said, it's not just about hearing and seeing, it's about experiencing. And that is something that most of us cannot do, but we need to uplift and acknowledge those experiences in order to make change. So from the students' perspective, most of those within the DI community who have not been able to come here tonight did want me to once again reiterate those points that it is a requirement from those in power to make those changes, and that it, without the DEI position being filled currently, many students are feeling unsafe, many students are feeling hopeless, many students aren't feeling representative and aren't wanting to proceed with further action because they don't feel like they have support around them. And it is up to the school committee, and this is again, amplifying student voices. Many students believe that it's up to the school committee and those in power to re-establish that position in order to further create progress. The advocacy room, which is another DEI subcommittee within our school, has continued to try and make the school at Burlington High School more and more equitable. And there is a lot of overlap between the two. But again, the DEI coordinator was very influenced, influential in that, in that advocacy room as well. And he, it was really a healthy space where people could talk about their experiences and understand and learn and grow as a community. And I feel like, again, with what all the students here presented, it is a requirement from the school committee and from those in power to reinstate that position. On other news, there is a lot of student government going on. Most grade levels are having fundraisers, and a lot of students have come up to me asking about like, how they can get involved within the Burlington community. So again, it's just about being connected and being diverse. And I just believe that with what everybody has said here, the Burlington High School community requires more education on social issues, and that is what most of the students here are looking for, and that is what I am here to report on, the like, need for the issues. Thank you.
Thank you, Matt. The next item is Ways and Means. Steve Moore, are you here virtually?
Yes, I'm here tonight. I don't have anything to report, however.
Well, go.
We'll go quick.
Yes, thank you. And.
Another announcements. Oh, yes, Ms. Masardo, I know.
I just wanted to inform the committee that Fox Hill, as part of the Safe Roots to School, we won a $6,000 grant for, through the Safe Roots to School program. It's for signs and lines. Thank you very much, Bob, for all your hard work in helping me with that application. I was very pleasantly surprised that we won it. We have a meeting next week with the state to start implementing that, but the, it's additional signage and painted lines all throughout Fox Hill. All things are identified as part of our arrival dismissal audit. And the main goal is to make it safer and easier for students to walk and bike to school by kind of separating the bikes and the cars and adding some crosswalks. So I'm really excited for that and to just keep our participation going in Safe Roots to School. We did have another, it was the International Walk, Bike, and Roll School Day. We had a hu, it was another really nice day. We had a huge attendance. We had both safety officers. We had a motorcycle police officer going up and down Westwood and Fox Hill. And I, I biked myself, so I wasn't there the whole time, but the. and Fox Hill, and I biked myself, so I wasn't there the whole time, but Officer Costa said we had well more than we had in the spring, so at least 200 or 300 kids walked or biked and scootered to school, and it was a really, it was a great day. And many parents come up to me and say, when are we doing this again? When do we do this again? I'm like, you can walk, bike, and roll to school any day that you want, so, but we'll have to organize some more days again, but all exciting.
Thank you for that update, and also for the transportation. We did have our committee, we did have our meeting. We've been updating the presentation for the town, so we've made a lot of progress in that as well. And Mr. Pass.
Sorry, I should've mentioned this during subcommittees, but the townwide DEI committee met last week, working on the, finalizing the third quarterly report, which will be presented to the Select Board on November 14th, their next scheduled meeting, and also trying to schedule the next joint Select Board-Town DEI Committee meeting. Looks like at this point sometime in mid-November, but it depends on everyone's schedule. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Simon, did you have a comment? Okay, thank you. All right. So the next item is learning, equity, and thriving. Dr. Conti.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just one last announcement is the October enrollment that I promised the school committee. So, again, this is what our state funding is based on, so if it was not in your packet, I just wanted to make sure you got a copy of that. So again, moving on to Section 5, it was in the packet, yes? Okay, great. Marian, thank you for doing that. The learning, equity, and thriving, again, we're joined tonight by Carrie Lamprey, our Director of English Language Learning or English Learner Education. So Carrie, if you want to come up and talk to the committee, and I think you can make your introductions there, me here as well, so thank you.
Hi, good evening.
Thank you all for sharing your time tonight. Thank you, Dr. Conti, for the invitation to present an update on our English Learner Education Program. There are a few introductions that I would like to make tonight. The first is to Ms. Maely Castro. She is our new English Learner Assessor for the district. This was a position that you helped us to put in place this year, and, you know, already it's helping us enormously with ensuring we are meeting our compliance to the state as well as ensuring that our teachers are able to do more teaching. So I'm really appreciative of her and all of her work here that she's been doing, and thank you. So... Oh, Bob, do you have the slides? I want to make sure you have the visual.
Is there some way that those of us who are here in person could also see the visuals? While you're waiting, you can see some of the pictures of our adorable students.
For those with personal devices, you can watch it on BCAT, on your devices, if you want to pull that up.
So, again, I'm going to talk about our English Learner Education Program, and again, I have to start with, of course, the heart of it, our students and our teachers. So these are just a few photos from this year of our schools across the district, and, again, some of the great work that's happening. But we can go to the next slide. So I wanted to start also with the who we are as a program. So this is just a bit of data. It's updated from the data that you received in the We Are Burlington because Maely has done a lot of assessing of our incoming students, our new students, and so you can see that that has changed the total population of students who are identified as English Learner students. So right now, we're at about 250 students for the district, which is about 7%. And our top languages are Spanish, Portuguese, and Arabic, as well as our top countries of birth. United States is actually the top country where our English Learner students were born. Of course, they were born into households where there's languages in addition to English or other than English, and as well as Guatemala and Brazil. Here's a breakdown by school. So you can see the numbers by each school, as well as the percentage of L's, of English Learners. One thing to note is that our BECC, the students have not been screened yet this year because they are so young, we wait for them to get adjusted to school a bit, and then we will screen them as well. But we do have some students identified from the previous year, and the rest of the schools all look pretty similar to data from last year, minus, if you look at Pine Glen and Fox Hill, there was an adjustment in that, and I believe that was based on our arboretum switch. So you see Pine Glen's numbers are actually much higher than they were in the past, and Fox Hill's are slightly lower. So I wanted to take you on a brief journey, in a brief journey with this adorable little guy, Leo. Leo's a current student here. He is now at our middle school, and this is really his experience. He came to us in November of 2020 when he arrived from Brazil, and I just want to share with you, based on Leo's story, this is what it looks like when we have a student arrive in the district. So when a student arrives in the district, the first thing they do is they fill out many registration forms, many, many. And one of those forms is a home language survey. That home language survey is given to all families, and all families, and some of you who have children here remember this, fill out the types of languages that are utilized in the home or with others that the student is connected with. And based off of that DESI document, we then identify students who are possible multilingual learners and that we could screen to just identify that they are going to be successful in their classes, or if we want to provide additional support to help them to be successful. So Leo did have Portuguese as another language, as you can see, and so Leo is one of our students who we identified for screening. So with that screening, there is an official instrument that DESI determines that we need to use, and so that's an online screener. So students take an assessment in all of those areas, listening, speaking, reading, and writing. And based off of those scores and a combination of those scores, students are identified as either English learners or not English learners. And, again, this was prior to Maely coming on board, but this is something that Maely has taken over, and so, again, it's a big process, as you can imagine. We have all of the kindergarten to go through at the beginning of the year, and we also have all new students, and they come during the year. So we are, this is a constant process. So once a student is identified, they are part of our English Learner Education Program. Many people think of this as the ESL class that students attend, where they focus on language development, but it's more than that. We have ESL teachers, yes, who provide targeted language instruction, and they are our language specialists, but we also have all of our core content teachers. We call them, across the state, SCI, or Sheltered Content Instruction Teachers. They are, any teacher in this district who has an English learner in their class is a SCI teacher, and they provide the grade level content. They ensure that students can access it, of course. That is their role as an SCI teacher. Each year, a student who is identified takes the state-required access test. Again, complimentary to MCAS, students across Massachusetts take this, and what that does is that gives us a year-to-year assessment of students' language development. It is also the test that we use to determine if a student is ready to exit our program, if they no longer need support. And so students take that every January, February, and we receive the scores in May and then use that to base our placement decisions with students. Now, Leo took this test last January, and I am happy to report that Leo scored high enough to reclassify. So he exited our program last January, and he is considered, this terminology actually comes from our Aspen, but, you know, DESI likes to keep us on our toes and they change the acronyms all the time, but it was formerly called FLEP, and now it is now FEL. So that FEL, F-E-L, stands for Former English Learner. One of the changes on that terminology was really to think more asset-based, because FLEP is referring to former limited English proficient, and so we like to not think of the deficit, but rather the asset-based. So what will happen to Leo? Well, yes, he exited the program, and so he does no, he no longer needs ESL specific instruction or any specific focus within his classes to be successful. However, he will be monitored for four years. So what that means is every November, every May, we send out a monitoring form to all of his core content teachers, which they complete and they send back, and then that form is then reviewed. If a student seems to be struggling, we then follow up. So our ESL teachers will follow up with those teachers, set up a meeting if necessary, and identify what supports we need to put in place. So in addition to all of those pieces of identification and assessment, once a student is identified as an English learner and they're part of our program, there are some additional supports that we provide to not only the student, but also to the family. So as a mother of Leo, Maely is also our English, on our English Learner Leadership Team. So this LPAC, English Learner Parent Advisory Council, is what we offer to our families to ensure that they are connected to the schools, because as we survey the families before each meeting, we find out that our families were all born outside of the country. And so, as you can imagine, they have many questions about how our system works. And so this is a place and space for them to gather, to connect with each other, to learn more about our schools, but also, really importantly, for us to gather feedback from them about what's working and what we need to change to make this a better system for their children. So with that in mind, as you can maybe see from this picture, there's a familiar face there, so I want to thank Ms. Martha Simon, who has joined us for several meetings and has been a great presence there, as well as Dr. Conti, who came and spoke about the data from Burlington. I will say that one student who was also present, so we invite students to join their families as well, and one student from the high school here was very excited that she was part of the two students from her native country that Dr. Conti had shared. Also, the district and school leaders came. So I know Ms. Carrie Purchase is in the back there, but she came as well as other building and district leaders. They came to introduce themselves to the families and talk about one special event that they enjoy at their school and they look forward to this year. So again, they took time out of their schedules to support our families, and I will say that that was felt by the families. And one of the comments that we heard was that they felt that the presence of this leadership team made them feel truly seen and heard by our district. So in addition to the LPAC, we also received Title III federal grant money, and that money in our district goes to additional supports. What we've used it for in the past is adult ESL classes. So Maely and I teach classes in the evening for the parents and family members of our students, which is another great way to connect to the family. And we have summer after-school programs as well. Professional development is offered for teachers, and we also work on developing and revising our curriculum to make sure that it supports our students through that. And then one more. So finally, I just wanted to introduce you to the newest members of our ESL team. We had quite a few additions this year. So we have a couple of instructional assistants, which has been wonderful for extra support within the classrooms. We have as well some ESL teachers, Iliana at Francis Wyman, Shamika at Marshall Simons, Laura at Marshall Simons, and Anna, or she goes by Annie, at Pine Glen, who recently was hired on Friday. So, again, we have a growing team, which is exciting as we grow with our students. And of course, there's Maely as well, district-wide. In addition to that, a quick thanks to the rest of our ESL team. In particular, I wanted to mention Christina Leslie, who has been going above and beyond to support our incoming Ukrainian families. So we are seeing several families come in from the Ukraine, and Christina is from the Ukraine herself, and so we are very, very lucky that she's one of our ESL teachers, and she has gone to other schools to welcome families and support them, as well as obviously all of our content teachers. I'd like to... This is telling me it's time to stop. I don't know. It's not, it was off. It was off, Bob. All right, so I'm just going to end it here and just say again, thank you. Thank you to everyone. I also wanted to just quickly thank our tech team, our tech integration specialists, who've been doing a lot of work in helping us support our English learners through technology. Obviously, Rosemary De Souza, who's one of our administrative assistants, has done above and beyond to be part of our LPAC meetings and help us with that. And then, of course, Dr. Conti and all of you, so thank you.
Thank you very much for the very detailed presentation and informative, and thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, Carrie, would you just mention the tool that we're using for the LPAC meetings called Lexicate?
Yes.
Because I'm assuming the school committee's going to see that expense coming up, and it might be great for them to hear about how it's being utilized.
Of course. So one of our obligations, as well as a desire to do right by families, is to be able to provide interpreters and translators for families who are requesting it. And so we have been actually utilizing a system called Lexicate, and Lexicate, we've actually tested out at our open houses this year, but we've been using it consistently at our LPAC meetings as well. And so if you've ever seen the United Nations and what that looks like, where everyone has an earpiece in, that's what it is. So when we're doing a presentation like this, if we had some families who wanted to hear it in their native language, they would have a device. We provide them with an iPad and a headset, and so they have that on, and so while I'm speaking, they're hearing what I'm saying in their native language, and they can choose among the languages. So we have it offered in, definitely in Spanish and Portuguese each time, because those are our top two languages, and then we ask families to request, or we base it on prior requests, what we also offer. And what's been wonderful is that schools have really been utilizing this this year more than ever. We're seeing schools basically sharing the responsibility and connecting a lot stronger with families by using this interpreter system to call home, or, again, the translation company to send all of the documents home to families.
And again, did we pilot it at Memorial for Back to School Night?
We did. We actually piloted it at Marshall Simons and Memorial and the BECC. So we tried it at three different schools, and, again, it was a great way to give access to the presentations to our families, and we had several families utilize it as well.
So again, Madam Chair, the process, I try to bring the committee back to see the results of your support. So the district underwent an audit from the state in regards to special education and regards to the English Language Learner Program. And as a result of that, Ms. Lamprey came to the district and said, they asked us to provide more support. This committee supported that, and so I think some of the progress that you're seeing is a result of that, of that process, and obviously, that pattern of doing a, an audit or a reflection, coming back to the committee, and then putting forth resources, I'm assuming is going to be something that we're going to be discussing very shortly. So I think that this is a great model for us to... So I think that this is a great model for us to emulate. Carrie, thank you very much. I think that when I first started, we had three ELL teachers at the time, or ESL teachers at the time. I think the acronyms have changed. And so I think that we've grown the resources with the incredible diversity and language diversity. And you know from the August report that we have 57 languages spoken at, in our, across our district. So thank you very much and please pass on our gratitude again to all of the educators who work in and with you.
Well, dear, thank you.
It's nice to see people in person again, too.
I know.
All right. And congratulations on your new position, Maely.
Thank you. Happy to be here.
One question, please.
Yes.
Is it possible for you to share that presentation with us? We can take another look at it?
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. And the next item is the DEI discussion. Dr. Conti.
Thank you, Madam Chair. You've heard obviously a lot already, but I will add my voice to the conversation that you're about to have. Diversity, equity, inclusion, and belonging work continues in the district, as does learning recovery from the pandemic. I hope the English learner education presentation provides a concrete example of these ongoing efforts. Ms. Lamprey, thank you for your presentation this evening and please pass on again our gratitude, as I just said, to all of our ELL teachers across the district. I appreciate that there are questions about the recently vacated DEI job and the Assistant Superintendent Sabbatical. I am not immediately posting for an interim Central Office Director of DEI or Assistant Superintendent for carefully reasoned considerations. The primary consideration for not precipitously rushing into hiring is that my staff and I need time to reflect on the past year's successes and challenges. I want some time to talk to lots of people regarding what was successful and what challenges we encountered. Please know that I take full responsibility for the challenge, challenges, and I give credit to those who achieve success in this difficult work. And again, I want to stress that. I take full responsibility for the challenges. The successes are due to the efforts of others. In addition to desiring more information and time to reflect, hiring a central office position early in the school year significantly limits the candidate pool. I want to optimize the candidate pool from which I choose staff. I am also wanting to support conditions within the district that increase the likelihood of success and longevity for new hires who come here to be change-makers. Along with speaking with individuals, I am looking at DEI structures in other districts. There are districts using different organizational models that I would like to explore, including a school-based approach. A school-based approach recognizes that Black, Brown, and other students of color and other marginalized students need representation, intervention, and support directly in the buildings where they largely have their school experiences. I want to bring about positive systemic change where it is needed, and that requires a sustained effort at the building level and time to develop relationships with teachers and administrators. Ultimately, these building-based positions need centralized support either through an Assistant Superintendent or a Central Office Director of DEI, or both, or both. I want to stress that a school-based approach does not preclude adding a Central Office Director of DEI, again. In my experience, however, posting for a Central Office position in October is too early. To be clear, I fully support expanding access and opportunities for all students. In fact, there are specific initiatives underway that have been discussed repeatedly at the August, September, and October school committee meetings and voted on by the school committee as a foundational part of our district improvement plan. Again, you need to look no further than the presentation tonight as one example than these are more than just words. Other initiatives, and this is incomplete, include district-wide, a district-wide curriculum review process, a school committee policy review process, a district-wide equity audit, and work to improve our hiring process to add more diversity to our workforce. As we discussed again at our last meeting, one in four of the talented educators who are new to the district this school year are non-white. This percentage is the highest number that I'm aware of in my time in Burlington. Madam Chair and committee members, we have a great deal of work to do to ensure that all students, families, and educators feel like they belong in our classrooms and our school buildings. I am committed to leading this work. Rushing to replace several positions without reflecting on our prior year's experience will not promote continued growth. Rest assured, I will not do this work alone. There will be opportunities for many individuals and stakeholders to contribute to this work as we move forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Conti. Any questions or comments from the school committee? Ms. Masardo?
I do. First, again, I want to echo, thank you, everyone who spoke. I hear you all and I think it's very important. I think you're all very brave for coming here and thank you very much for sharing your stories. I support the need for the position and also like the idea of the decentralized, I think, coach, coordinator, both were used, and I really support all of these positions. I understand that posting in October is not ideal. The one question I have now is I think some of the folks addressed DEI programming that might not be happening this year. Is there a way that we can replicate that in the interim? Or things like that that might have gone away in the short term with this position? Is there any way we can make some of that happen while we do reflect and try to figure out exactly what we want in the future? I just don't want, I know there's some seniors here, right? Is there work that we can be doing while we post, while we interview, et cetera?
Ms. Masardo, through the chair. I certainly believe we can. I think I need to talk to the high school about more specifics. My understanding, extending is the advocacy room is meeting. I think maybe the first meeting was today. So that is ongoing. I believe the student clubs that have been being held are ongoing. I think there was a DEI group that some of the members are here today that I probably need to do some more research on. But if that's a high school group, I would certainly want to speak to the high school about who would be coordinating that and how it could happen. Again, I think the other groups are ongoing and I wouldn't have a problem with anything continuing.
I guess the question is they have the adult leadership that they want to help support them while they're running those groups. I interpreted some of that correctly from you all.
Again, we don't have the central office support to do that, but the high school may have someone who can step into that role. I just need to have that conversation.
Ms. Hammond?
I also want to thank everyone who spoke tonight and I'm a bit at a loss for words. I didn't prepare something to say tonight. I have ideas of what I wanted to say tonight because I, I don't want, year after year, to hear students come and say they don't feel safe and they don't feel included and they don't feel they belong. I know that there are staff throughout the district who've been supportive to students who come from different backgrounds or different races or different religions or whatever. And I want to support all of that going on. And yet, I know that there are other situations, whether it's with other students or with teachers, that don't, you know, that students don't always feel safe or included or belonging. I, I do, as I said at our last meeting, want to make it clear that I'm committed and I believe the rest of the committee, I can't speak for everyone else, are committed to continuing this work. And I know it doesn't sound like much because it's more words. You know, it's saying the mission statement again or the equity statement again. I have, I support Dr. Conti in the idea that he should take some time. I think the work is urgent. But I also have, in my work, learning about how to be an anti-racist, trying not to be, act urgently when thoughtfulness is needed. So I feel like there's a balance of urgency because it's real and students and families are dealing with it right now. But that we, I appreciate Dr. Conti's approach of saying that he wants to think about it and especially where it's not just one central office position, but we are also going to be looking for a new Assistant Superintendent next year and how those pieces fit together. I was actually pleased to hear some of the statements that you, the students, made about feeling the need for both, a director and also to have people in the buildings, coaches or whatever we want to call them. So that's an important piece as well. I think it's, it's good and it's also ironic that we had this presentation about ELE, about English learner education tonight, because I think it is an example of how we are trying to address issues of belonging. And yet, it's focused on a particular group of students with a particular background and their families, who are coming from different backgrounds than many of the BIPOC students that we have in our district, who are native Burlington kids and, you know, whatever. It's not the same. And yet, we have an incredible structure for our English language education. We have a director, which is a state requirement. After a certain number of students are in your district, you're required to have a director position. We have EL teachers at the classroom level. We have them in every building. We have family connections because when students come in, there's a family connection. And as I was listening, I keep trying to think about how can we create that support system for all of our students, all of our BIPOC students in particular? And there's clearly an overlap, but, but it's not, it's not structurally there. It's not built in the way English language education is built in. And again, I think there are a lot of staff in the district who have been doing work to try to make DEI work part of what they, whether it's a classroom teacher, trying to make it part of what they teach, or if it's a building administrator or whatever, Mr. Larkin and Mr. Porch were doing that work. Dr. Conti, I believe, is doing that work. And I would like to, see, this is what happens when I don't have a prepared statement. But I couldn't be prepared because I wouldn't have heard all of what you folks said tonight. So I'm also glad I didn't have a prepared statement. I, again, the words, you know, it's words again. How do we, how do we take actions? I mean, I did prepare some suggestions of things I want to be sure that we move forward with and I want to press to move forward with, and some action items. There, in particular, there was, we had a district equity committee, which seems to have been disbanded a year ago and nobody I've talked to seems to know why. The district equity committee included teachers, building administrators, students. I believe there were parents on it and at some, certain points, there were school committee members on it. There was some back and forth about which roles are appropriate in that. And I think that's a good question to ask, but I think we should seriously consider reestablishing a district equity committee. And I think starting it with internal to the district would be the most helpful for staff and students perhaps to be doing it without, to start there. Not that there wouldn't be a role for community members, parents, school committee people in the future perhaps, but that's a suggestion. And the district equity committee also had come up with an action plan. The action plan included a lot of what you folks have mentioned tonight and included things that we have begun. There are things in that action plan that we've begun. We've started changing our hiring procedures. We're not there yet, you know, but there have been changes made. We have, I believe, we are starting a pilot program on restorative justice this fall. Is that true, Dr. Conti? Am I right about that?
We have scheduled training and we have teachers participating in that training.
Training. So is that a particular building or is that district-wide?
District-wide.
Okay. So it's something that has gotten started and I think that Mr. Porch probably had a lot to do with getting that started. We also, I also, the curriculum review is something that's been repeatedly happening and I know Dr. Conti is already trying to get that process going. We also, as we all know, we're kind of waiting for the equity audit report. And I think that it's the, it's something that we haven't gotten a lot of reports from yet. And so I think we're all, I'm certainly eager to know because maybe the district equity committee action plan that we had two years, from two years ago, is, is right on target and we should just keep going with all of those things. And maybe we're off track and maybe there are other things that are more important. So I look forward to getting that report when it's ready and when it's complete and making sure that we have time to review it, that we disseminate it, that we have conversations about it, and that we can then make priorities. And I know Dr. Conti will make recommendations about priorities as well. The equity audit report is supposed to include recommendations as well. And I'm guessing that the report will have recommendations that we're not going to be able to do all of at once, but again, setting priorities and putting them into our plan for success if they're not already there, which I think some of them probably are. I also think that we can be asking our teachers more of what, I mean, we can ask, we need to ask students, but I think the students are speaking, which I love. And I also think that there's teachers throughout the district that have thought a lot about these issues and I want to make sure we're asking the teachers. Many of them were on the district equity committee in the past. And maybe others who weren't on the committee want to have a say. For example, if the district teachers who were on that committee don't think we should restart the district equity committee, it's not, I mean, just because I thought that was a good idea doesn't mean we should do it. I think we should be asking teachers if they felt that was a useful format to be using. Another particular thing, one of the areas in the action plan was to create an incident response protocol. And that's something that a number of people have talked about, but it's, it's meaning that when there are incidents, we have, well, it's two parts. There's how do we prevent incidents from happening? And I don't remember who referred to that. Why should we end up having to come in and take care of an incident where some of our students have been made to feel unsafe? What can we do to have ways of interacting and teaching kids and being with kids that those situations don't happen? I think it's realistic that there are going to be more situations in the future and do we have a consistent way that we respond? Not only do we need to have a consistent way to respond, but everyone needs to know what it is. Because that way, a student who's been in that situation knows that there's a thing they can do, there's a person they can talk to, that the teacher who sees it knows what to do, knows who to talk to, that the family, maybe the student didn't feel they could talk about it at school if there was an incident. And the parents may need to know, my student came home and this thing happened, what does a parent know? How they can bring it back to the school district so it can be addressed? So I think incident response protocols sort of in my mind include all of that. Now, people in the district may have another approach to it, which again, I'm not saying there's one way to do this, but I think it's really crucial that we embark on that soon. And, you know, again, maybe wait for the equity audit, but that's a really top priority for me. And the other thing is that the school committee, as a group, made a commitment two years ago to have annual training. So not only do our students and our staff need professional development and support and to be learning how to become really good DEI supporters and help all of our students feel safe and that they belong. But our school committee certainly has things to learn as well. As many of you said, we see, we hear, we learn, but we're not necessarily experiencing all of what some of our students are experiencing. So trying to get more training. The training we did do a year and a half ago included talking about implicit bias and we came up with our equity statement at that point. So I think it was a good... So I think it was a good experience for all of us and a good session. But we need to do it again. And I'm, again, going to ask Dr. Conti. I know he's, I know Dr. Conti's in discussions with some consultants about doing another school committee training. So I appreciate that and I hope it'll be soon. So that's what I have to say and that you're, I, you know, that you folks are heard. It doesn't necessarily feel like it because this is all words again tonight. But I am hoping with all of us together, whether it's students, teachers, other staff, school committee, that we can all together move forward in ways to meet our mission statement. And thank you all for coming tonight.
Thank you, Ms. Simon. Anyone else have any comments? Mr. Foss?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Dr. Conti, for your statement. I appreciate what you're saying about the ongoing work across the district. And Ms. Lamprey's presentation tonight is a great example of it. The things that are in the Plannings for Success document are all things that are ongoing, are appreciated. But it, sometimes it's hard to see those things, except in a situation like this where a presentation is given to the school committee. From my perspective, it, the district does a good job of supporting educators of color. Maybe a too good of a job. The three high-level educators that left in the past year are partially due to the district's efforts with the Influence 100 group, is that right? So, I mean, they are moving on to positions in other towns, unfortunately for us, but fortunately for those other towns. So, I mean, that's another thing that Burlington is doing well. I think that moving those educators into influential positions across the straight, across the state is good overall. But, I mean, again, it's obviously difficult for the students that affects here. And so my question, I guess, is more logistical. When the DEI director position, the, the job description was included in our packet and it's when I reread it, it brought me back to 2020 and all the work that went into it with the district equity committee that Ms. Simon mentioned and was mentioned as well by some of the speakers. And it's robust, I think that it is. And I don't think, I know because of what is, what was said here tonight and in, in other places, that it is a needed position in the district. So my logistical question is, would it be possible to post it as an interim for this year? Because the need, obvious, the need is obvious for, again, because even though the work is ongoing in many different places in the district, there needs to be someone to kind of coordinate it all, to be a sounding board, to be a support system for students who are in need. And if it's posted as an interim, the discussions that you mentioned, which I think are important and your point that hiring in October is basically the worst time to try to hire. But I don't think it needs to be an either or, I think it could be an also too, where we get someone here to help with the transition to, and if that, you never know. It could be the perfect person is out there and they just finished a contract somewhere. Probably not, but maybe the perfect person is out there and we hire them and they end up becoming the permanent hire. Or they help with the transition and help with those discussions and maybe they run the, a reconstituted district equity committee. And so we post as an interim and then post again in the spring at the appropriate time to the, where the candidate pool may be more robust, so to speak.
Madam Chair, may I? So, Mr. Foss, I just want to make sure I answer you directly. Is it possible, yes, we could post as a, as an interim? One of the things that, the reason for the job description in your packets is because I think the job is huge. And so one of the things that I've been sort of thinking about discussing is, is there a way to bring in an interim coach with a commitment for a DEI director when the timing is going to be better for a central office posting, which would tend to be maybe mid-year roughly is, is sort of what I'm thinking about? So do we look for, we, we have hired a instructional coach at the middle school who has a background in DEI. So we have a school-based resource for educators and students at the middle school already. Do we look for potentially a position like that at the high school? And then, again, appropriately look for a, a central office position when I feel like the candidate pool would be, would be better? So it's not to do without a resource, I guess. I'm just trying to figure out the, the best timing and then how we end up in a place that is, that is going to help us move forward and be effective. Again, in the middle of all this too, we, we have an assistant superintendent search to do as well, which is a critical position. And I think there's a lot of DEI work, for lack of a better term, that needs to occur through curriculum review and, and we need to give that some attention as well. So I think the brief pause, it is going to be brief, is to, again, have some conversations, to talk to some, some other districts, to talk to some folks in this room and to say, is there a way that we can sort of bridge that gap? And my experience has been more than likely, never say never, but more than likely, it's going to be difficult to have someone break a contract to enter into a position, a director's level position in a, in a district. Is it possible? Absolutely. So again, I'm not against posting. I just, I believe there may be something more effective that we can do in the, in the interim. But again, I want to have some conversations first and to, and to, and to move it forward. It's not, I'm not standing on pride. If it was about posting tomorrow, if I thought it would be effective, Mr. Foss, I'd post tomorrow. So it's, it's just, and I can do that. But again, I think it would be largely symbolic at this point and I'm trying to actual use, use the salary that we have available.
Thank you, Dr. Conti. Any other comments? Okay. Thank you all for attending and we're going to go ahead and move on to the next item on the agenda. And it's to talk about the BHS renovation committee.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So again, in front of you, well, I guess we should maybe step back to say that, Bob, we have submitted a statement of interest for Burlington High School, again, for this year through MSBA.
Through the chair. So not the current fiscal year that we're in, but the prior fiscal year. And we have not received a notification as to whether or not that's been accepted.
Right. So we have a pending high school MSBA application, the one that we haven't been supported on, I think, 11 times at this point. So I think that it's highly unlikely that we will be supported moving forward. So I think you all understand the rest of the story. The work at the high school still needs to be done, even without MSBA. I think you've all sort of committed to that. So I think one of the recommendations that we are, would like to make and sort of have the conversation tonight, not necessarily select tonight, but to discuss going through what I'm going to call an MSBA-like process for, for the high school. So again, the document in your, that Bob had shared with you that we can have a discussion about is the MSBA's recommendation for positions on what they would consider a local school building committee. And so we can discuss some of those positions. I also think what we discussed last time was because we went through a very, I think, robust search process for an owner's project manager for Fox Hill. And I think there was a lot of positive feedback on the owner's project manager. Part of the contract with the owner's project manager would be to allow us to expand, enter into negotiations to expand some of their responsibilities. Again, with an MSB, MSBA process, you would have a local school building committee like we have for Fox Hill. And then we would have the expertise of a owner's project manager to look holistically at the project. Because I think that's been the, one of the missing pieces for me at the high school is we have lots of big pieces and they're very expensive pieces. But how those pieces fit in, how they connect. Ms. Simon, you've been saying for years, if we tear out the ceilings to put in a new HVA system, what makes sense to do at that, to do at that time? You know, the warrants with the high school are getting more difficult to pass because town meeting, rightly so, is saying, okay, what's next, what's coming? And I think if we can have a parallel process to an MSBA process, if by some chance we, we are incorporated into MSBA program, we'll have some of those pieces, again, already in place. But if not, then we are just not constantly waiting for a building that desperately needs renovations. And if they could put together a seven or eight-year plan, that makes sense from a building perspective. Because I know, Bob, you, you have a lot of time and you've spent some money getting, for instance, the design on the, on the HVAC system. But again, how does that fit in and what makes sense for us to do along with that? And maybe even if they can price some things out, then you all can go to the town to say, okay, we need however many millions, tens of millions of dollars, but over the next eight, 10 years. And then at the end, we'll sort of end up in the same spot as maybe doing one large renovation. Because I think from the town's financial team, I think they were looking to break this into, into chunks. And again, I don't have the expertise to tell you that we should do one part of the building before, before another. What we're doing now is just as things fail, we are, we are fixing them. And I just don't think that's an efficient way to go, to go about doing it. So again, Madam Chair, it was a long-winded explanation. Bob, you have the high school, not the high school, you have the Massachusetts School Building Authority Building Committee outline. So again, it's in front of you. If you want to discuss which positions you think would be well-served on a high school committee, we don't have to follow MSBA, which is a good thing about not necessarily doing that. But if you do that, Bob and I will put that, put that group together. And I think then we can start to extend invitations. I know Ms. Kasha is in negotiations with the OPM. We need to get a cost for that. And then we need to come back to the committee with that proposal, how we plan on paying for that, those services. And then the, the committee and then put together some sort of timeline. And I really believe that if the OPM has the capacity that they've shared they have with us, then I think that would reduce some of your frustration about the project moving along in between, in between school committee meetings. So again, that's my, that's my recommendation with, in terms of moving forward. Again, I don't think we need all of these positions because we don't have to have them. But if you all could prioritize some of them, that would be great.
Thank you, Dr. Conti. So I guess my question to the committee is, tonight, I think we were maybe possibly just going to vote that we're actually going to form this committee. And then maybe what we can do is have the discussions, once we've had more time to review this. We can review this at a later date and decide which we think are important to have people join the, the group. Ms. Simon?
Yeah, that would be okay with me. I would like it to be at our next meeting. That, you know, I, and, and I'd also like, Dr. Conti, I have not been through one of these processes in, in, you know, in extension. And you don't, I mean, I don't know which of these, I know that there's a number of positions that MSBA requires that seem in my mind to overlap, but I don't know which ones you're feeling are, are the priority. So I don't know if you want to talk tonight about that or give us information between meetings. But if you want to talk about it tonight, I'd be interested in that in terms of making a decision for myself about how I would go forward.
Again, Madam Chair, if you want to have more discussion first, I can certainly share my thoughts and my feelings. And Bob, you're, you're here, obviously, as well, having gone through this process. I think for district positions, obviously, I would need to be somewhat involved, even though not the most critical. But we would need Nicole from the procurement perspective, Bob from the operations perspective. Would love to have some teacher representatives from, from the high school. Probably the high school principal, obviously. I think from the, the town, having someone from the town's financial team on there because ultimately the project is going to cost, cost money. And then, Bob, maybe someone from the, from the building department or what would be your next priority?
Through the, through the chair. I think initially when we discussed the SBC for Fox Hill, looking at some of the recommendations, we did recommend actually someone from the town building department. When we submitted that to MSBA, they came back with a recommendation that while the wording leads us towards building department, it really means somebody who can financially help us build a school, not physically build a school. So we ended up actually putting Mr. Denizio twice on that list, just because of the qualifications. So again, a good recommendation, definitely to have somebody either from, let's say, engineering, from DBW, from the building department, that could help us with some of those questions. But I also believe that the OPM brings that value as well too, you know, to the discussion. So I think all the recommendations here are great. I just would consider time commitments, you know, from some of the people on the, you know, that we would recommend.
Okay. Thank you. And Ms. Masara?
I am admittedly new to this, but obviously been part of the Fox Hill School Building Committee. Maybe you know this, maybe Dr. Conti. Would it be feasible to like add Mr. Sullivan to the Fox Hill Building Committee and just have a school building committee and just, because we've named 75% of the Fox Hill Building Committee? And if we're using the same OPM and, I don't know, it might be a question for Dr. Conti.
Ms. Simon?
Yeah, I, I, maybe, you want to go first, Mr.? Can you say that right?
Please. I personally would advise against that.
Okay.
Because I think the confusion in the meeting minutes and the distraction from the specific meetings. Once we actually get into really heavily task-based meetings, specific to Fox Hill, I get it that later on in the agenda, we could obviously shift over to a high school conversation. I just think that we'll be in different timeframes. You know, let's say we'll be in the building side of the Fox Hill one, but then talking about, let's say, the feasibility side of the high school one. And they may not even be the same members of the team from, you know, our OPM company. So I think it's too early to have that yet.
And I was going to also say, you know, it's hard enough to get enough people to attend those meetings for Fox Hill with time commitments. If you want to try and have the same people do it, they may not have the time to do it.
Well, that was my point.
Right. But, but you're not going to, can't combine the two meetings. I think it would, like he's just said, you're going to confuse the minutes.
Fair enough.
It's possible, but...
Fair enough, but if you can't get them to come to one school building committee meeting, how are you going to get them to come to two?
Well, hopefully we get a different pool of people.
Madam Chair, it just, sorry, I stepped out, but just to, to interject. Ms. Masara, that is a model that some communities have. But I think my experience here has been the timeframes are such that we're talking about five or six years. The Fox Hill Committee, even as it stands now, won't stay the same. Hopefully you will or we'll have some members who are the same, consistent. But there will be people at different parts of the project or times in the project who are more interested than others. So I'm going to use a really ridiculous example and I'm sorry, but when it comes to like designing classrooms or, or outfitting the, the building, the furniture fixtures and equipment, you're going to have more educators interested in that part of it and they'll come in. So the committees sort of aren't necessarily static. The high school one now, I think what's critical, again, my perspective, is we need a long-term plan and we need something for you all to fight for. And so I don't think we're equipping you as a committee yet. And we didn't mention you as members here, but obviously that would be the case and some parents too. We're not equipping you to go to town meeting because we don't have a, a plan. And I think the, the warrant arto conversation about the music room floor was sort of a canary in the coalmine for me, because I think people, town meeting ended up supporting it, but they, the questions were, what's next? How does this fit in? Are you going to come back then, next year, and ask for something else? Are you going to have to redo this project when you do something else? Those are all great questions, but I think what that told me is we need to go back to town meeting with a, a five- or 10-year plan from someone who has the capacity to do that, to do that designing. And, and again, I, I think then the financial pieces become more concrete, and then the projects, and then we can say the music room floor is absolutely the next thing to do, because we have the seven or eight years mapped out. So I feel bad, because I don't think we equipped you all with, with that plan. And so that's, the intention is to do that, again, not to get in aside, but we also, we're doing that with athletic facilities, and then we're going to be, I think we're, we're going to have that done for Fox Hill, because that process is mapped out, and essentially we're starting that process from the ground up. But the high school, if it is of renovation, which is what we're talking about, then we need to equip you with that information. And again, we, we have, we, we just need more information.
Madam Chair. Thank you, Dr. Conti. Any other, Ms. Simon.
Yeah. I also don't think it makes sense to, to, to combine them, because I think that the projects are really different, and that the conversations are really separate. So, you know, I could imagine if we had two, I don't know, maybe there'd be a scenario where it would make sense, I know, as Dr. Conti said, but for me, it's such a different conversation that I, I think that we should have a separate, I'd like to see us have a separate building committee, but I would like more inform, and I'd like more information about, you, you listed some general things, but you didn't go category by category. Do you have this form in front of you, Dr. Conti? So the first one is SBC member who's MCPo certified procurement, and that's Ms. Kasha, and I agree, I think that's crucial. The second one is the local chief executive officer, and I believe that's the one where we could say that's the financial team. Is that accurate? I think that would be an important, because then it says administrator or manager, and I don't know that that's a generic, that seems sort of generic, that maybe we wouldn't need. A, at least one school committee member seems important, superintendent of schools seems important, and the local official responsible for building maintenance, are we talking about Mr. Cuna there? Okay. I, yeah, I think that's crucial. And then what is the representative of office authorized by law to construct school buildings? So that would be an MSBA member, but so we don't need that? What is that?
Again, through the chair. That is the one where we presented with a building, building department staff member, and then MSBA came back with correction for us that it wasn't about building, but somebody who was more authorized financially to help us construct that.
So if we had the number two on this list, that would be covered. The school principal, I think, is crucial. Now, it says member knowledgeable in educational mission and function of facility, and I believe that Mr. Volano is on the Fox Hill School Building Committee in that role, but I don't know if you meant teacher, because I think what's not listed here are teacher representatives, and I agree that we need, should have at least one, and poss, on the Fox Hill School Building Committee, we have actually two, one is a regular ed and one is a special ed teacher. So I'd like to see that. But is that what, is there another person that you see in that member knowledgeable of an educational mission and function of facility?
No. I, I honestly think that's a, that's sort of a catch-all category, and I've never built a school without teacher involvement, so...
Right. Okay.
And again, I think the involvement expands and contracts as the building project, you know, warrants for it. Typically, teachers don't care about the foundation, but when we start talking about classroom layout, school layout, again, the furnitures, fixtures, and equipment, then they're the experts.
So for example, Mr. Volano is on the Fox Hill School Building Committee, and I think he has a, a different perspective than a teacher does, and that's, I think, going to be really valuable, but it's, I'm wondering if that's the kind of thing where we don't necessarily need to identify that right now, and at some point, the Fox Hill project may be far enough along that he may not need to be part of the Fox Hill project anymore. We might, as you said, people can come on and off. He's someone I could see wanting on both committees, but maybe at different times. So, and then the next item is a local budget official or member of local finance committee, so that's like ways and means, right? And I do think that's an important piece, as, as you just explained, you know, we need to work with the town financial team, we need to work with town meeting, we need to be looking at this. I also think it's, it, you know, members of the community, and I think trying to find somebody with architecture, engineering, and/or construction experience could be useful, or unless there's another experience, skill set that we find of people willing in the community, I, I like that. And under other, I had added in the teacher reps. So it looks to me, you know, as, as we talk, it looks to me like, you know, there's maybe three thing, three roles on here that we may not need, but we would want to add one or two teachers, perhaps, something along those lines. So that's sort of how I'm thinking about it. I think, and we ended up, you know, we ended up with, I think, two community, three community members on the Fox Hill Building Committee, and I think there are good reasons for all of those members. Maybe we want just one right now, and then later, there would be reason, but perhaps we, we might want more than one community member on this committee.
Again, possibly, and I think people will come and go as the project moves on. I think the critical partner in this building committee, once you establish it, is having an OPM assigned to it, and because as you sort of participated in that process with Fox Hill, they will create agendas, they will take minutes, they will create a website, they will generate a common message, they will make sure the momentum keeps moving, keeps moving forward. And I think that, again, I, I didn't want to misread all of your frustrations, but I think you just want to make progress is, is sort of what I'm, what I sort of am getting from you, and I think that that's the type of support that we have. The OPM may make other suggestions. They might have said, we've done this before, and, you know, 15 other communities, and this is, and this is what we, what we recommend. I just don't think we can go, continuously go to town meeting and be supported if we do it in a, without a larger plan in place, is what, sort of what I believe. As generous as town meeting is, please, that's not a, not a knock at town meeting.
Thank you, Dr. Conti.
So, I'm sorry, if...
Ms. Simon.
So I, I could make a motion, but I'm not sure that there's anything we need to vote on tonight, if we're all willing to come back maybe at our next meeting and come, try to finalize a list, and that at that point, we could perhaps vote on it?
Yes, and I'm hoping that we'll have definitive cost or proposal from the OPM for these extended, expanded responsibilities. They, in fact, may put a different team together, because they may have an elementary team or a high school team, and I think that would help shape the conversation as well. Clearly, I'm getting the impression that putting a building committee together is something that we will eventually end up with. Again, I just want to make sure that we have the sort of overall expertise of a project manager. There's a reason MSBA requires communities to hire a, a project manager for the building process.
Thank you, Dr. Conti.
Want to add anything, Bob?
Anything else you want to add?
I do not.
All right. So we'll hold off on doing any kind of a vote this evening on this. All righty. Let's move to the next item, facilities and finance. Dr. Conti.
Again, thank you, Madam Chair. Bob, I'm going to pass it over to you for Fox Hill.
Through the chair. The only update I have for the Fox Hill Building Committee is that, well, we have selected an OPM, and MSBA has approved it. There is still some contract negotiations while they were previously negotiated, then their contract does have to be finalized, submitted, back to MSBA, and so forth. So there is a, wouldn't say a small delay, but a time length of process that needs to take place before we've actually shaken hands and have a signed agreement. So that is in process, and we do expect that soon. We just don't physically have it yet, so...
Soon meaning two weeks, or you have no idea?
I would have loved to have said I had it tonight, or we have had it tonight, we being the committee, but I don't have a timeframe. It could be by the end of this week, it could be early next week. I don't expect a delay too long.
Okay.
So I don't expect multiple weeks.
Okay, great. Thank you.
I am meeting with them tomorrow to intro call with the Steve and Mike from Dornwood Air, because there are some tight timelines coming up, and I want to make sure if we need to have a school building committee meeting, I think November 7th, something is due, so we need to get the ball rolling there. So I'm meeting with them tomorrow.
All right. Thank you. Okay. The next item is BHS update.
Well, again, honestly, our conversation is about not making it a standing agenda item, because the reason it is a standing agenda item is to keep it on our, in front and center, because the building has needs. So again, hopefully, you'll see the standing agenda item go away, and you'll have a Burlington High School School Building Committee report, and I think that's just going to be a much better way about, about doing this.
Thank you, Dr. Conti. Anything else to add? Mr. Cuna? Okay. Yes. Mr. Foss.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I meant, I should have said this during subcommittee, but I was reminded that at the last Recreation Commission meeting, Director Egan mentioned, so this is more like an advisory thing, but Friends of Baseball did a fundraiser, or several fundraisers, and raised enough money to install batting cages down at the baseball field at Francis Wyman, and so they're in, I'm sorry?
Sorry.
So did I get anything? I don't, I think that's, that's what he said, isn't it?
You finish it, and then I'll comment, please, sorry.
So they're in the planning stages to select the right spot down there, and that's pretty much it, that it's going to make a nice improvement at the field. There were some concerns about noise, but they were not big concerns. Did I miss anything, Bob?
Sorry. Through the chair, if I could just comment, to the best of my knowledge, unless it happened today, they're not installed yet.
Sorry if I misspoke. They're, they're in the planning process now.
Yeah.
Could be installed at some point in the spring.
And then my understanding is that it's Friends of Burlington who's going to be doing the donating and the fundraising. I'm just saying, I thought you may have said Friends of, Friends of Baseball. So I just wanted to make sure that if it is the Friends of Burlington that's doing the donation, that they were recognized as that. And I do also want to reiterate that, you know, it has brought, brought to my attention as well, too, the potential for noise. It is, would be no different than a baseball game, minus maybe some chairing in the number of people there, but consistent aluminum and/or wooden bats hitting a baseball into a net could be concern for some of the neighbors. It would be no different than what happens at Simons Park, there is a batting cage there as well, but again, it's just something that was brought to our attention that we may need to consider in the future.
You occur, Friends of Burlington Baseball is who raised the money.
Okay. Sorry, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Simon.
Is this something where it's being built on school, so did they, is there a process where they had to, you know, like, who approved it? And did, did that happen? And is it approved because we have a representative on the Recreation Commission? I, I'm just curious, the process that was used for this? Because I'm concerned, I mean, any group could say, oh, we want to build a this on our soccer field, or on our something field, so...
I have to plead ignorance on the exact process. It went through the Recreation Department, and it was, we were told about it last week at the Recreation Commission meeting.
Mr. Cuna, anything you want to add?
I could just comment that I don't believe that there's a priority list, but I believe that this has been on a wish list from not only the baseball team, from the athletic director, has been in prior discussions with the Rec Department. I don't know how about the process came about with the donation, and why this particular donation, but I do know that, like I said, Brendan Egan from the Rec Department had reached out to me, basically expressing his happiness that, you know, a group was willing to donate these, and it's something that we would be able to fulfill from the previous request, so...
So, Madam Chair, I, I, I think it's wonderful. I appreciate the donation, and I just wanted to alert the people involved to be aware, because it is something where it could become a problem in the future. I think it's a great idea. I'm delighted that there's a community group that's sponsoring it, but we have had, I have concerns that in the future, it could be a problem in another situation. So I just wanted to remind people to be aware of that, so...
Thank you, Ms. Simon.
I also have one brief announcement I forgot about earlier.
Okay.
I just, yesterday was the, the main day, but I wanted to wish Happy Diwali to all of our students and families in the community who are celebrating Diwali this week. I know we celebrate it on the Common in September, because in New England, that's when the weather permits, but this is the week of Diwali this year, and I wish everyone a, a year of light and, and a good Diwali.
Thank you, Ms. Simon. So we do have need for executive session under Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 30A, Section 21A, Subsection 3, to discuss strategy with reflect, respect to collective bargaining. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the school district and chairs or declares BEA union contracts. We're going to do the approval of minutes for August 16th, September 13th, September 20th, October 11th. Do I have a motion?
I move, we go into executive session.
A second.
Any discussion? Ms. Masara?
Aye.
Ms. Simon?
Aye.
Mr. Foss?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. We are officially in executive session.